All right, I'm calling to order the study session and regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education. Today is February 22nd, 2024, starting as the agenda indicates at 6:00 PM. Tonight is our first night of this new format of combining our study session and our regular meeting under one agenda. We are starting off in our normal format in this room for our study session and then going to the main room for the regular meeting. Under one agenda, we will only do one public comment, which has been our plan, and we will do the pledge of allegiance when we reconvene for the main meeting. So with all of that, can we please take attendance? Trustee Noble.
Everyone is present except for trustee Southward.
Thank you. All right, Section Two, Study Session, Board Committee Updates and Liaison and Representative Reports. So we are going to see updates from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, Finance and Operations Committee, and the Strategic Planning Committee. I will start with the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
All right, I did it. I pushed the button. So we met on February 5th. It was our first meeting, really productive. It was kind of an intro to be able to talk about what are we going to do here? What are the kinds of things we're going to talk about? We had myself, trustee Van Gemmer, superintendent McDonald, Kimberly, Laura, Todd, and Sarah. And so, kind of kick everything's off, there were a couple of things of what do we need? Really, it was kind of filling things out of what are we doing here and kind of focusing in on what we're going to be talking about. Some of the summary of the discussion, we focused on a couple of high-level topics. Number one would be tutoring. So we had a deeper discussion about tutoring at all grade levels. So at the high school level, being able to talk about who those vendors are. So we have varsity tutors, and I think at that time, that was a note got sent out Monday after our meeting to talk about the students that would be selected for that. So those invitations went out. And then, I think that was kind of the first go-around to see how many people would accept that invite and then kind of go from there. Also looking at an Algebra I support class before school, which would start next year for students that would really need support. So another topic that is going to be for a future discussion is really about math. That's been something we've talked about as a group, recognized a need for some important focus there. And algebra is a critical area where we know that's really where students, in order to get to those higher-level math classes, in order to succeed on some of the standardized testing, it's really critical that they succeed at algebra. So having that Algebra I support class being available next year is something that we talked about as well. At the elementary level, three vendors for tutoring with the fourth option being BHS staff. We didn't have any dates or numbers at that time yet, but that's kind of the initiative is being able to roll that out, so.
If I could interject too, we are working to get another vendor online for Elementary Two, Sylvan Learning Centers. They're another one of the approved vendors with the state, so we are working to try to get a contract with them as well. They offer additional opportunity for some in-person tutoring.
We also talked about iReady, which obviously why, you know, Todd, Sarah, and Kimberly are gone today, they're at that training. That will be available for grades three to five. I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong on where this is being demoed, but two elementary schools for math, one for interventions at elementary, one at an elementary for third-grade curriculum.
Sounds about right.
Okay. I did good with the notes. So that's being demoed right now. It's useful as a tool, targeting additional small work for those students, promoting, identifying areas of weakness that those students might have, also assisting teachers with giving a broader roadmap of a student's performance, and then how that can be used with interventionist to really target any kind of gap areas or where they can improve, where they may need a further support. So it's really infancy right now. That's obviously why those three individuals are at training, is they need to learn more about it. And then, as they have that knowledge, the board, obviously, after, will kind of go through that knowledge transfer as well and kind of understand how this works, how that will impact our school district. But it's really exciting. It's a great tool from everything I've learned about it. We also talked about the need to understand kind of holistically from a board level, like what are the academic goals? Because I think that's going to drive a lot of the conversations we have in this subcommittee is, okay, you know, where do we need to understand some of the data sets more? If we're going to reach some goal, how are we going to ensure that we have the metrics in place that help us get there? So that's something that's kind of still as a question for the larger group is, you know, what are those academic goals that this board wants to focus on? What do we need to look at? Is it, you know, specific SAT results? Is it the tutoring? Is it iReady math? Like, we still have to develop that, and that will help kind of guide that subcommittee in terms of what are they looking at? What are we going to look at in our meetings? I think that was kind of the major themes. We were supposed to have our meeting on President's Day, obviously, that didn't work, so we've moved that to the 26th, so we'll be having our next meeting on that time. We've kind of already synced up, talking about the next items for discussion there, but I don't know if anybody else on the subcommittee has any more? John? You're like, who else?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. And then, any questions from anybody?
I have a question, and I love this one. It's going to be discussing your subcommittee, so feedback from the community has been over the last several years, is looking at our current curriculum, doing analysis, like two examples, your feedback.
Button. So. Just so anyone watching is up to date, we have a new microphone system that is meant to prevent unnecessary noise, so board members are not active, and now we're adopting a new habit of having to turn the microphone on and off before we talk, so.
So some feedback was to take a look at our curriculums, like envision math, like what's the data behind? Has it been there now three, four years, however long? Has it been successful? Do the educators like it? Students, is it moving the needle in terms of our academics? And also, feedback I got, like our reading phonics, we use, right, Lucy? Right, we, anyone here from the?
Lucy Cockens, but no, that, I don't believe that's the, I think it's some supplemental, but not.
We don't use, you know, so, but I guess that the question is, is that, yeah, are we going to take a look at each of our curriculums that are up? What's the data behind it? And then, what's the next step? Either continue with it or use it? That would be feedback that I think our community would appreciate.
Yeah, so, I mean, in addition to this, to our first meeting, I also talked with Todd as well to kind of get a deeper dive on specifically math and then some of our ranking, but that came up because math curriculum is currently, right now, on the, what are we doing next? Because that is on the way out. So I know that that team is looking at vendors already, working with the teachers.
Envisions on its way out?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm not going to say.
It's one of the, so that you have a cycle on your curriculums, and we're at the end of that cycle. So at the end of the cycle, you do exactly what you just described.
Right.
You do an analysis of that curriculum, and you look at other curriculums that are available. So that's the process that our K5 teachers are going through right now.
That's happening now. I assume that, I won't speak for that group, but obviously, I'm sure they are collecting that information now about, we've had it for four years, almost? I don't know exactly. It was like right before COVID, I think. So we know how that worked. We've got teachers who know how it works. We've got anything that we need to understand about it, right? So we're going to use that, not me, but the district at large, will use that to be able to identify, right, what do we use now? Because we have this, so they'll do a study about what vendor we'll go with for the next math curriculum.
Got it. And then, the only other feedback, I know it's, is about what are we doing in the district and what's our, in terms of writing? You know, that's, you know, feedback, in terms of writing, evaluating writing. So if you can ask, do a deeper dive within the committee and then report out, this is what we do at the elementary level, this is what we do at the middle school level, and this is what we do at the high school level, for writing and both assessment of writing. I mean, that's my thought, you know, feedback that I've gotten from the community.
So, one of the things that we talked about was having a plan for the year rather than a series of ad hoc, you know, agendas that have kind of random things on it. So that was one of the things I asked, that we kind of lay out what we're going to do for the year, so we have an idea of where we're going and what the plan is. And so, like I said, it was the first meeting, it's the only meeting we've had, and I don't think anyone knew. I mean, I think Keith has a plan, but we don't know it just yet, or Keith and Todd and whoever else is going to be there kind of has their own plan, but we're not to the point where we know what it is. But once we know what that is, we'll let the board know.
Which is fine. I'm just saying, feedback is that maybe that can be part of the plan, you know, sort of, I'm assuming, and the academic side analyzing curriculum would be part of the plan, you know, and then reporting out. So doing a deeper dive on it and giving us the data that, you know, we're looking for, that kind of community members are looking for.
Yeah, I think the curriculum one makes sense. Like, if we just implemented curriculum, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know, I mean, we'd be gathering data on it, right? But the time of when we analyze that curriculum and when we decide, is this beneficial? Is it not working? That's really now for math, because there's a critical juncture of what we do now. But yeah, to your point, we can certainly ask about writing. I don't have the answers. LST really isn't here, but I'm sure they can give us information. We can ask about that on the 26th of, what do we do across the district for writing? I don't know. We can definitely ask the question and get that answered.
Okay.
Yeah, I just put that on there.
All right. Any other questions on that topic? All right, so the next subcommittee report out will be from Paul for the Finance and Operations Committee.
Yep, so there was two meetings since the last time we met as a board, and obviously, you know, head of finance, Candace, Keith, myself, Michelle, Seva, focused on three areas. One, so we're going to get, Candace is working on a timeline now for the budget and providing more information to the board, so there's not much to report out on that. So if any of the colleagues here have something specific, as we're looking at budgets that you want to take a look at, just send me an email. I'll make sure it gets on the agenda. We focused the last couple of meetings on a couple of things. One, so going through in detail sort of the bond update in terms of the feedback that we got, there was a presentation done at the PTOC meeting regarding the bond, you know, breaking it down, and I have it here, I can kind of go through it high level, breaking it down by building by building, how much we spent, what was the anticipation, where we are, so I can give a high level in a second. And then, the third thing we focused on a lot, because it's been prevalent, is from a facilities point of view, obviously, was the move, the robotics move. So we've gotten feedback. So a couple of things. One, it was addressed also at the PTOC meeting. So feedback was that the space, one of the big issues with the space was the height. So just making sure we were able to raise the roof. So we're able to raise the roof, we're able to seal off pre-K to make sure that's not an issue. I think that was the main issue. The roof was the main issue. I'm trying to think if there was any other, you know, things outside of the location itself. So the two main issues that we discussed in detail, that we made sure that the robotics team was aware of, was that their space will meet all the needs in terms of having a large enough field and having enough space for the other teams that are going to move in there. And then, two, making sure we have, was it a vestable, what's it?
Secure vest.
Secure, you know, between the preschool, you know, and the robotics, so there was no way, there's going to be a separate entranceway, so no way there'll be any crossover in terms of getting in there. I know there was a meeting, I know Keith and team had a meeting with them to go through that, and I don't think any of their specific, any issues related to the space itself, we'd have not addressed yet. So that was part two. And then, I think those were the, you know, the three main things. So in terms of, let me open up the document, in terms of the, I have it here.
Is that the presentation I did for?
Yeah.
At PTOC? And we did here as well at the last study session?
Yeah, so we did here at the last study session. It's going, again, breaking it down by building, how much we anticipated initially, spending, how much we did spend, how much is left over. It actually hit home with the PTOC that the focus is going to be the additional savings going back into the elementary schools. So some of those things that we weren't planning on doing in the elementary schools, we will be doing now. So a lot of the, you know, the classroom space that we couldn't get to, we will be getting to. So putting that money back into the elementary schools was, obviously, resonated well with the PTOC members. And then, it's just a matter of, you know, once we close up, you know, all the things, which I think we're like 98% there of, things that we anticipated initially doing with the bond, and then it's just those extra add-ons over the next two years and making sure that while we did them, there wasn't disruption to any of the academics going on best we could.
So on that note, regarding that money that's going, going to be able to go back into the schools, was there discussion at the PTOC? Because this is something I've heard from PTO presidents at several of the elementary schools, is, and I've brought this up before to Paul Wills, designating, clearly outlining for them what is and is not going to be modified in the next go-around next summer? Because the PTO is trying to do some cosmetic, trying to make some plans for some cosmetic things to change, and they want to know, is this something we should fundraise for, set aside funds for, or is this going to be addressed? So I think it would help them significantly to have that clearly outlined. And then, perhaps there are some minor things that are not a significant cost that were oversight, if you're not living and breathing in the building like our PTOs are and everyone else is, you would miss those details. So I know it seems like minutia, but I think it is a big impact on.
Yeah, so I guess a question would be, and maybe this is to Keith as well, would it, and I don't know in terms of hitting it, would it be best that Paul go to each of the elementary schools' next PTO meeting or just have a separate? Like, who's the best person to have that meeting?
Did you hear this raised as a concern at the PTOC meeting?
No.
Okay. Then, it might have been resolved, but I have heard it from them several times.
Who's them?
PTO leadership in several elementary schools.
So we walked through that, as to what's going to be done in the summer of '24 and what would be done in summer of '25.
Okay.
So I don't know if that addressed your questions, and I can speak to it briefly here.
But maybe in a forum like that? People didn't feel?
I think that would go a long way, just to spend.
Yeah, I'm saying, maybe in a forum, someone from Conant, right, just saying, you know, I'm looking at you or way.
Happy to go to a PTO meeting.
Didn't feel to say, I want to say something, so whether, I guess the question is, who would be the best person? Is it at a PTO meeting or separately with the principal and some leaders in the building?
Like the PTO president?
PTO president?
I think that would probably be the most efficient.
Yeah, probably like a separate meeting, not at a PTO meeting.
Yeah, I think it would be the most efficient, because they're the ones really in tune with some of the things that need to be changed. And if they could just see sort of a punch list of, oh, we are already planning to address that or not, I think it would help them with their planning quite a bit.
Yeah, no, I mean, listen, that's fair, so we'll talk about that. We'll make sure it's on the agenda next week to see where they are in terms of the meetings with the elementary. Is it just elementary school? I mean, I'm assuming nothing needs to be done.
No, our middle schools are.
And South, you know.
Yeah, I think this is specifically an elementary school issue. You know, there is some branding, there's some branding at Eastover.
There's a lot of stuff in North that still needs to get done.
Yeah, there's a lot, and I think I know where you're going.
Yeah.
There's branding at Eastover, no different than we have branding right now that at South Hills, that those weren't areas that we were able to address in the bond.
And it's branded as?
Branded as the HMS Losers.
Okay.
So we, we still are looking at that, and some of those projects are the ones that, like Jake and I are talking about and prioritizing across the district with our roofs and other mechanicals, as to where are those going to fit in that could potentially be sinking fund items as well.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't, to your point, original point, it wasn't brought up at the meeting. And we all know those people generally are not that shy when they have an issue, but maybe they didn't want, so if we could just follow up, follow up with them individually in a meeting with the principal and some, and the PTO presidents, and then give them the heads up, whatever feedback they want to get from the people in the building prior to that meeting, they have that meeting.
And just create clarity, because some they recognize aren't going to be handled, and they were going to have to do fundraising or allocate their own funds, and it just will help them plan better with they know and have clarification.
And that document did have a level, enough, a lot of detail in it. Like, if they were planning on doing, let's just say, the lounge, that document did have by building what they were planning on doing, and let's say the lounge wasn't in there, so it should.
Yeah, well, that was a big one, right?
Yeah, so I'm just saying, should give them a roadmap.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the Finance and Operations Committee?
I was just curious, what are the things that you can cover in the elementary schools that weren't going to be covered with the savings?
It was a lot of classrooms. So originally, in the bond, there were certain classrooms that got done, and like mostly kindergarten wings, so there are other, there were classrooms that just weren't getting done. So it was a, for some people, there was a misconception that all the elementary schools were going to be brand-new. It wasn't. They were going to do a significant amount, and there were, as an example, let's just say, you know, I'm looking at Megan Way, 10 classrooms is going to be, you know, left alone, and then you'd have next to it, brand-new classrooms. So to the extent those classrooms weren't getting done, the money will begin, will be put into those classrooms.
All right. Is that in on that topic? All right, moving on to the Strategic Planning Committee. Trustee Noble, do you have an update?
Yep. Well, we met twice in February, February 7th and 21st, and I can go through the list of people who were part of our team. It was quite an extensive list. So Seva, John, me, Rebecca, Keith, and Karen, she's not here, Michael, and Alan joined us today, or yesterday, for one of the meetings. So it was a good group, and we have quite a few updates, so bear with me, this is a long list. The first one is bargaining update. An update was given to us regarding the paras and also the interveners and interpreters and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. So we were given an update on those individuals. Also, foundation and the PTOC, we were updated about the structure of both of them. For Bloomfield Hills Foundation and the PTOC are separate 501(c)(3), so they need separate financing and structure for best practices, and you were kind to tell us that update and that accounting best practices are to make sure that they're separate from Bloomfield Hills General Fund Accounting. Is that correct? And so, we were told about that.
Yes.
And that most school districts also have that in place.
Yes, that would be insistent with the structure of other school districts, yes.
So you were kind to meet with the two groups, and it was receptive and very positive, so we're moving forward with that change. Then, the therapy dog update, Julian Embarger, I might have screwed up her name, and Alan Jaros worked on a budget and funding over the last few weeks. It is the most comprehensive and thorough update that they've done and to see where the funding is heading. The future funding plans are in place, and they're going to update us next time what the funding looks like, as far as I know. So then, there's the pool rental policies and procedures and discussion there. We had a discussion about the possibility of outside groups using our pools in North Hills Middle School, as we all saw, they're beautiful, and who wouldn't want to use them? So we're trying to figure out, you know, what are the policies around that and what kind of lease agreement that would look like, and kind of discussing all the ins and outs of those details. So, because there's a lot of interest out there, and if we allow some groups to use it but not others, it could cause issues. So we're kind of deciding, not deciding, but we're just talking about some of those things and trying to see who can use the pool. Because if everyone, our students are primary concerns, so if they are using it, we don't want to double book. So we will, we will move forward with that. And then, there's the biggest issue is operating and home harmless millage. It expires December 31st, 2025, and we were just informed of that yesterday. I didn't even realize that was a millage that we had to discuss, to be honest with you, but, so it was suggested that August 6th, we could either have it on the ballot or November 5th, which is, August 6th is the primary ballot, and not as many people come out to vote for that, I would say, and then, everyone knows November is the general election. If we have those two dates, we will save $100,000 for the school district, so we don't have to put out costs to do a special election. That's a very positive thing, so it's actually lucky that we're discussing this right now. And so, what I wanted to put out for all of the board members is that to have it go on August 6th ballot, we need to get the language done by May 16th, which is really close coming up, and we have to have the language all ready. Or if we want it in November, we have to have the language ready by August 13th. So I wanted to propose a open dialogue right now to see what people are thinking and feeling in terms of timeframe, because if we don't pass this, we won't get that home harmless per pupil funding.
I think I'd like to start by just diving into that a little bit more before we talk about the timeline.
Can we, Candace, can you just provide a little background on what the operating millage and the whole harmless millage are?
Sure. So to provide some context around that, starting back in the 1990s now, Proposal A changed the funding mechanism for school districts. And prior to Proposal A, most of school districts, the primary funding was their property tax base, and then that switched to, just making sure that, sorry, technical. Did you hit, did you turn the, is your mic on? It is on, yes. Yes, thank you. Okay. Sorry. So after the passage of Proposal A, the states changed the funding mechanism where school districts were primarily dependent on a foundational allowance. So we're at about $9,600 now. However, we do not receive all of that $9,600 from the state of Michigan. We do receive part of that foundational allowance by way of levying taxes to our taxpayers. So our residents, our non-residents. Our operating millage is a millage that is, it's 18 mils maximum that we can levy on our non-residents. And then, we also here at Bloomfield are unique in that we do have a hold harmless millage, which does allow us to tax our resident taxpayers. And that is because it held us harmless, if you will, during Proposal A and the transition to the state aid funding, the taxes that we were collecting as a community were significantly higher than when we would pivot to that state funding mechanism. So it is a significant source of revenue to this school district. The operating millage alone is about $19 million. The hold harmless is, sorry, I want to make sure that I have that together, I'm actually looking at it right now. The supplemental is actually $19 million to the school district, and then the operating millage is another $15 million to the school district. So that would be a combined $34 million of revenue to Bloomfield Hills Schools. However, the law does require us to take that millage out to our voters for a renewal and approval. And so, and looking at our L4029, which is the mechanism that we need to communicate to our different municipalities, came to our attention that as of December 31st, 2025, our millage will expire. So we are okay to levy for the coming fiscal year, for '24, '25. That July levy, it's 50/50 in December. However, we do have an opportunity coming up this fall to piggyback on the elections coming up, to have that millage approved and renewed now, rather than having to go up to a special election and potentially, the most recent sinking fund was $100,000 cost to the school district. And so, it would behoove us perhaps to consider putting that on the millage ballot now. Does that help provide some context?
So, Candace, are we talking about renewing the millage at the existing level it is today?
We, yes, we do levy 18 mils. We are subject to the rules of HUDLE rollback, and that's a very technical term for, we potentially have, we are at risk if we just levy the eight, if we approve up to only 18 mils, depending on property tax values and inflation, we could get into a situation where we're not levying 18 mils. And so, we are currently approved to levy up to 20, but we only levy 18. So yes, we would need to have discussion about what, the maximum to protect ourselves from not losing, say, a million dollars because of a HUDLE rollback? Because the state will not make us hold for that.
Essentially, the board needs to.
Essentially, the board needs to decide. Yeah, yeah. So essentially, the board needs to decide when we're going to put it on the ballot, because we're not not going to put it on the ballot. The two options that we've been given thus far are August and November. The language would need to be approved by April, some date in April in order to get it on the August ballot. And the November ballot's going to have, I mean, everyone that votes is going to vote in November, most likely. You know, I mean, that, that's the, so, and that would obviously be three months later that the language would need to be approved. So for the board, we need to put it on an agenda to vote on putting it on the ballot. I would assume either, or maybe the March meeting or the April meeting will figure that out and ask to have it put on the agenda, but that's, that's where that's at.
Yeah, so from my perspective, great, it's, it's not costing the district anything in August or November. I mean, we're not talking about, this is language that we have. It's not like, you know, we're doing, you know, tons and tons of research. It can go on the March vote in, you know, and, and, you know, I'm sure you can draft the language in March and put it, you know, and, and obviously it's ready in April to go on the August ballot with the goal that it passes in August. Doesn't pass in August, then we can go to November, another free election, so we have two shots at it. But this would, again, this would cost the district. It's, it's going to go on the ballot. It's actually prudent for us to put it on, when we're not costing the taxpayers $100,000, we might as well do it in August. It's not a lot of work to get the language, which is, you know, kind of, you know, regurgitating, you know, old language changing to dates and then voting on it in March. That's my thought.
Okay. I mean, yeah, just put it, like, let's get it on the agenda for March then. I mean, I, I don't think that making a decision as to, you know, when we're voting on it is that big a deal, so.
I mean, we're voting on it.
We're not voting right now. You know, we'll, yeah, get it on the agenda.
It's going to cost $34 if we don't, so we might as well just do it in March. That's my thought.
I think that makes sense, because then you'll have more time if it doesn't pass to, you know, reassess what went wrong and work on that. Although I doubt it won't pass, but you never know, right?
I mean, there's something to be said for either choice. I mean, the August choice gives you a second bite. I mean, you'd still have the next year, obviously, but, and I don't know what free election, you know, what elections are up for 2025. But the November election gives you all the voters. I mean, strategically, maybe you want less voters, I don't know, but ethically, I think you want as many voters as, as you can, you know, so.
Well, they are free to vote in August. It's, it's a free and fair election, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
Well, there is maland, it's not like you're, you know, people are away in August, there's maland balance, but I think, listen, this is to make it, you know, we got, to get to the finance stuff, you know, we get $9,800 from the state, let's just say, well, you know, we get $6,800 from the state, $3,000 or so, you know, like ballpark, is this operating millage? And then obviously, you know, the $4,000. So we're losing, you know, I mean, this is, this would cost us $34 million.
Right, right.
So we're putting it on a ballot, might as well just put it on the ballot if we're allowed to in August, and it's not costing the taxpayers any money, whether it's August or November. And I don't think we're hiding anything. I mean, it's, we're just putting on the ballot as quickly as possible to make sure that we're secure financially, you know. Otherwise, we'll lose $34 million.
We are asking for a renewal.
I, I would think it's still prudent that we would work with our bond counsel. Jim Crowley, we've worked with him for a long time, he works with a lot of districts around here from Miller, Canfield, find out from him what he would think is best. The other piece of that is, I, I'm not familiar with what is currently on the ballot in August, where we would be competing language in that section. So I think it's always need to do your due diligence to find out what else is on that ballot. And then we could strategize around that as to what would be best for us, which timeline wise, doesn't help because of one meeting a month. If we wanted it in March, we would, we would have to move quickly.
We could put it on the agenda for next week's finance. Talk about it, make a recommendation with the goal, we discussed it here, as long as we, we've done our due diligence, if everyone agrees, then we can get the language ready to put it on in April.
I think we have, we have a month.
Before our meeting or after our meeting?
I don't know. I assume it's before, but I mean, we have a month to get the information and then we talk about it on, in March. And it's not like we have to put, we can put the language on, you know, August or November, and then we have that discussion, we make the, we have the vote. I was just clarifying, like, some information. I wasn't, like, necessarily wanting to get into a discussion as to what day we were going to have it, but I think we're going to have that discussion at another time.
You said the date is May 16th, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so May 16th is.
That's what Rebecca looked up by the day, right?
We have March and April. We got March and April then, okay.
So we still have time for us to do the due diligence, find out what else is on August. I think that's important, we should know, because we shouldn't just throw caution to the wind, even if we think it's good to do it twice, we should know what's out there. Gives us a nice time to draft it, understand what we're doing, how we, you know, how we want to view this. Yeah, and put it a finance subcommittee, they can examine it and then bring it back for March. Hopefully, we can make a decision by then, and if not, we still have April. So we're okay from a timeline perspective, I don't think there's a concern.
And I'm hearing more consensus that we would, we can stick with a, a straight renewal, no change in the up to mill rate.
When you mean up to, you're talking about up to, to protect us from headly?
Correct, correct.
I think, well, we can, we can talk about that at the, at the subcommittee meeting, right, because there is a potential loss, right? I mean, we went, I went through this previously and I, I understand, you know, the headly rule and that it can cost, so we can bring it up as an agenda right on our next subcommittee and kind of bear that out. And then the committee in our March meeting will make a recommendation based on what we've discussed.
I mean, it's been on the ballot every so often since 1994, right? Is that, I, so.
Yeah, we, we have some flexibility with the timeline in terms of the approval, but we also have flexibility in terms of how long we carry that millage out. We can carry it out to 20 years, we can do 10 years. They believe the most recent is 10 years. We had approved up to 20 of those to protect us, so that caught us nearly 10 years without being impacted by headly. But certainly, we can have some conversation around that, whether or not, we think it's clear as, we should make that clear as we are communicating to our tax base, that we do not levy 20 of those, we are limited to 18. It protects the district from losing revenues on an annual basis. And I do think that is really important part of that campaign. We do have some of the growing school districts that are currently, they are in, in the middle of a renewal as well. And, and so this isn't uncommon, but we should, we should strategize, what does that look like for Bloomfield Hills schools in terms of, do we consider a 10-year renewal? Do we consider a 15? Do we consider a 20 with score cushion? There would still be an opportunity if we hit that, kick that down the road, 15 years and we're coming close, we could certainly reopen that conversation with the community. There are items that we can discuss, and Jim Crowley has, has offered to have part of those discussions with the group as well, to talk about different strategies.
Can he come to the meeting on Thursday?
We could possibly invite him, yeah, we can see.
Okay. Thanks, Carolyn.
Um.
Oh, maybe not.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. When it came to the unions that were mentioned, I think Keith was just bringing that up, that those are the three unions whose contracts are up to be negotiated within the next couple of months here. And then with regard to the pool, there have been a couple of requests for rental and we might want to put that on an agenda as well, as far as decision-making as to what types of organizations, what, you know, how exactly is that going to be set up? Is the, like, does the board have to make a decision at all? Or is this something that the administration would make? But there are potentially competing, like, organizations wanting to rent the North Hills school.
Facilities. And facilities.
Right.
I mean, whatever policy in place, I mean, that would be the subcommittee, but I think they, I don't think it's a board decision, I think that's rec and facilities to decide.
And that, I mean, I assume, be no different than what if somebody wants to rent a school for.
High school, basketball.
Or for, you know, soccer, like, we have to have.
Summer camp.
It's no different, right?
Right, but one of the considerations was, one of the organizations that wants to rent it is a private school.
Outside of the district.
And do we want to rent out our pool to a private school that may or may not be competing with our district for students? And I don't know, like, again, I don't know if that's a board decision and I don't know that it, it matters, but it was brought up and we had a brief discussion about it. I don't know if we want to have that discussion at the board table. So that's, I think that was the reason, like, one of the reasons it was brought up.
What are some of the other types of organizations showing interest?
Oh, just like local swim clubs.
We have a lot of local swim clubs.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, like, again, I mean, this is, again, probably more of a committee decision in conjunction with rec and facilities. I mean, my thoughts about, as long as it doesn't take away from our students', you know, access to it, I mean, if it's just going to sit vacant, I mean.
Right, right.
I would just say that if it is going to be deferred to the rec and facilities to decide, that we ask them to adopt a clear and transparent process, readily available for anyone to access and know what the rules are in terms of how it's utilized.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be a policy, policy across the board for things like.
We're not making any decisions in our.
Auditorium, right? I'm sure they have, I'm sure it's a policy for anything that we rent out in the district.
There is, and we are, we are looking at that. That's already being reviewed and the timing with the new auditorium manager, we're going through those processes again. And I think it's, we have now an, an auditorium manager or swim manager, so we can take a, a look together with those, because they should be very similar.
Okay.
I was going to just mention what other topics we would be talking about in the future, in case anyone was interested in also suggesting topics, because we only had two meetings. But some of them that we've discussed is understanding the rankings and the indexes to try to strategically increase our scores. Also, we have a lot of land and we would like to strategically think of the use of the land, not making any decisions, just talk about it, talk about the land that we do own. And then talk about community and stakeholder outreach and planning, so it's a big part of strategy. That international academy plans, we've talked about that. That's a big piece that needs to be discussed more, because it's complex. And then reviewing threat assessment and then bargaining and Bloomfield Hills Foundation and working with them. So just wanted to go over those couple things.
At the risk of sounding stupid, would the rankings and scores conversation go under the curriculum conversation? I mean, I understand it's a part of a strategic goals that we're setting, but seems to me it ties in there with, with curriculum. Do you, I mean, if, if anyone disagrees, please inform me.
I think it probably fits better in curriculum and instruction, but there are definite aspect, aspects of it.
That intertwine over both.
That intertwine over both.
Um.
I guess in my mind, we're not talking about necessarily curriculum and the actual instruction, just strategy to increase our foothold in Michigan and to increase our rankings in general, but that's.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we have to have a curriculum that supports that?
We've, yeah, I mean, we've got to be careful too, because when we talk about that, I took a deep dive with Todd on Wednesday to talk about a couple different, I mean, we spent 90 minutes and we only got to talk really about one. So that's, because there's a lot that goes into it. When you talk about something like US News, you're opening up things which, some of the data is about, is 21, 20, 21 to 22. So when you talk, like, when you look at the data and you're looking at rankings and you're looking at performance and you say, well, I'm not happy with that, well, there may have already been things in place to affect that. So it, it's a very, it's a very deep thing that to me, and when I talk to Todd, the way that you use it in the best way you use it is really to understand, like, okay, what is this data saying about us? And then how can, how, if we've made changes in the curriculum, if we've made changes in instruction, if we've made changes in tutoring, whatever it is, like, there's got to be other things underneath that ranking that's going to tell us if it's effective or not. And that's what we talked about, not just looking at US News and saying, all right, how do we get better? It's like, well, what are all the things that go into US News? Some of that was just how many students are actually sitting for an exam, not even passing, but when we, we changed that, that we altered that recently, we haven't seen the full effect of that in the rankings yet, because that's from past, where, you know. So it's difficult to really look at that and talk about improvements until you unpack everything that goes into it. I think it would be helpful to, you know, maybe from a strategic perspective, say, where do we want to improve? Is Bloomfield, like, what's important for us? And from a curriculum and instruction perspective, we can kind of unpack, well, what goes into that? And really understand what are the things we can affect? What, we don't want to chase a ranking just to chase a ranking, but where we can make a significant impact in life of a student, that's, that's where you can glean out of those, out of those metrics. And I think that's important. So it's probably is a partnership to work together on some of those things, it's not one or the other, but, sorry.
Good point.
That leads to the larger discussion of what the goal should be for the district and the strategic plan. If we look at what is on our website today, there's only a draft of a strategic plan, which was established with a lot of feedback from the community. And it was established, or it was put in place, even that draft was put in place a while ago. So I think it's time to dust off that whole strategic plan, work with the CPC potentially to figure out what's a way forward, to put together a calendar for a strategic plan and how to bring that together, because I think the last thing was done, was done with the help from an outside consultant.
Yeah, almost, I don't know of any school district now that doesn't use some type of facilitator to take you through that process. It's, it's a very long process and you want to get as many voices into that as you can, as well as have a core team involved in that. And so that was one of the things we did talk about, that we could help through that subcommittee to, you know, maybe identify a few different facilitators that we could bring back to the whole board, have some conversation about who do we want to maybe engage with to help lead that. We can work on helping to identify who that core team would be for that strategic plan. And then how to then identify who the parent groups, the student groups, or community groups would all be in, and that could be something that, that committee could, could start to, to help move forward.
March is jam-packed with superintendent evaluation meetings, superintendent search We've got a lot on our plate, so perhaps we mark that as a goal for addressing in April. It'll give the committee a little bit more breathing room to, to give them in March and April, prior to the April meeting, to discuss sort of some, providing a list of recommendations, et cetera. I think, I just think that's a realistic way to bite that off.
And I think too, you, you'll, you'll want your permanent superintendent in place, so having that, you know, engagement not starting until the fall.
Yes.
And I think that as, as you start a school year, that is the right timing to start to engage into a strategic planning process. That process can take a year, it can take longer than a year. So it is, it is a long process, and which is also why you have a facilitator involved to help move you through that.
Any other commentary on that subject? No? Any other questions or comments about any of the items that we reviewed? Are there any liaison updates that anyone would like to provide?
I can give a few. So tomorrow.
That's right, the mic. So tomorrow.
Your guys' new job.
That's right, thanks, thanks. So tomorrow, the board intern committee is meeting with the students to go through this, so there was, if you recall from prior meetings, there's three goals that we focused on. One was, you know, one was academic, two were community. We've gotten feedback from the administration team in terms of their part. So tomorrow, we're going to meet with the students and then they're going to be broken out in committees and going to take the feedback that we got from administration and focus on those three goal areas. And then at our March meeting, we'll report back in terms of, you know, what the next steps are. So a lot of progress made, you know, thanks to administration, they've done, you know, a lot, a significant amount of work from their end. And now it's the student committees that are going to go back and.
And now it's the student committees that are going to go back and kind of tackle this and, you know, tackle those three goals. So that's the update on the board intern committee. And then do you want to give an update on the, even though we really haven't met, we're meeting in Mar, well, I mean, I can give an update. So the, the next CPC meeting is going to be in March. The focus is going to be on academics. And so right now, we're putting together an agenda for that meeting. Meeting's going to be either, is it March seventh or March eleventh, pending feedback? March thirteenth? So it's going to be March, is that the feedback that we got? So March thirteenth will be that meeting. And then we're going to put together an agenda and then go through, you know, the focal point, which is academics. So that's an update there. We had, and I think I reported out early on, we had a, a great meeting, a PTOC meeting. So it was liaison, me and Siva attended the last PTO seating where we gave a bond update. We spent most of the time giving a bond update regarding all the different buildings, what's going to be happening specifically in the elementary schools with the additional savings that's, you know, that we're recognizing right now. So that meeting was successful. That's all of my updates.
So if you look at that spreadsheet that.
Keith sent it around. I think I forwarded it to all of our.
It's in the shared folder, if the board wants to look at it. That kind of outlines how the spending is tracking right now for the bond, right? So essentially, there's three big chunks to spending. There's construction, there's technology, and there's facilities and equipment. And the facility and equipment and technology are much smaller chunks, and they're pretty much on budget. The construction is essentially on track, including three and a half million of, of additional offsets and income. So if you think of the construction budget, it's a total of one hundred and forty-five million. And then the administration has interest income from the bond funds, which were set aside from the bond itself, and that's, that and a couple of other items add up to about three and a half million. So in total, construction is also on target. Basically, the administration, the district's taken the interest income and a couple of other offsets and is using it towards construction. And the reason this is coming up is if you look at the far right of that spreadsheet to column J specifically, or column I, essentially, there's three and a half million of income which is being used towards construction. And all of that is being used for education and going back to students. The proposed change in transportation saves about seven million. You see that on, on row fifteen, and that's being deployed towards our elementary and our pre-K. And that's the message from that schedule.
I forgot, forgive me, I'm in the shared drive with the committee updates. I'm in finance operations and I don't see.
You could probably see the email that I sent that anyone.
Just, just.
I'm going to send Google sheet.
Thank you.
It's a Google sheet, but I also sent an email, and it's part of the attachment, so if you're going to mind.
It should be in your study folder for the committee of the hall.
Okay.
So if you go to the committee of the hall folder.
I don't send too many emails.
It should, it should be there, in there as a construction forecast. Be able to find that, Megan?
No. Tark's sending it to me. Thank you.
I usually send a lot, not too many. So you could just search my name.
Paul, come on.
I don't send too many these days.
So Candace or Keith can walk us through that if any questions. But basically, you can see, if you go to the far right, you can see in column J, that's what's gone into our elementary schools from the savings from the transportation center, right? And the green section is basically incremental spend towards the, towards middle school, and then row ten is what went into high school. So basically, whatever we save from the transportation center has gone back to directly support facilities. And part of this was because the, the bond book didn't have a lot of upgrades for the elementary schools. And the facilities team, Jake and, and, and others have found that it was in dire need of upgrades, so all this money is being used to go into the elementary schools.
And, and then the, you know, part of that too is because we're keeping Lone Pine, the old Lone Pine, to be a pre-K, so the savings from the Conant Elementary, which is about two-point-seven to three million dollars, is going to go. Two-point-five? Two-point-five million dollars, which is going to go in to Lone Pine, you know, for obviously what we need to do for the, for the robotics.
So you can see that on, on row four. You go back to column C. You'll see that amount was moved out of Conant and moved directly down below to Lone Pine.
And we, we, we were intentionally trying to move it out of Conant too, so that when you look at this, you don't, you're not looking at ECE dollars in that Conant Elementary. And so we tried to separate the two programs out by doing that.
So the intent was originally put in new construction for six new classrooms, and that was that approximately two million to see there. Instead, it moved to Lone Pine. You're not demolishing Lone Pine. Instead, you're putting robotics and seventeen additional classrooms in Lone Pine.
Yeah. And that gives us the ability to raise the roof, build out, and make sure that, you know.
We should have, right around forty, I think is what we discounted, early childhood classrooms across the district, which I'm not sure that you could get ten other districts combined to get to that number right now. So that's, that's a number, that's an issue that a lot of districts are facing, that is going to be one of our strengths. I mean, we run twenty, maybe, kindergarten classrooms in a year, and we're going to have twice as many classrooms as that for pre-K. And, and the anticipation is not to see the same, same level of participation in pre-K as you would in kindergarten.
Who owns this spreadsheet?
Candace and Keith.
Isn't one of the main issues with pre-K just hiring staff, though? It's not necessarily.
For sure. Yep, staff's an issue, and that's, that's one of the things that the group I'm part of, of superintendents that are looking at preschool from Oakland County that have been giving back to the state as concerns, like, we need to address personnel as well. We can't just say we're opening up all these classrooms. There has to be a plan there. They are working on some solutions, some ideas around that. The other issue is a lot of, a lot of individuals that work in early childhood are also childcare. So we also don't necessarily want to see this huge shift all over to pre-K, preschool, and then now we don't have what our community needs or society needs in childcare, because that, that has a large economic impact if you don't have places for, for childcare during the day. So there, that's a, that's a large thing that the state needs to still consider.
Any other questions on that topic? I guess the only liaison update I have to provide is, last night was supposed to be my first opportunity to attend a foundation meeting. I unfortunately had a personal circumstance that did not allow me to attend, and I'm working with them to find an alternative time to catch up off the meeting cadence, so I can get caught up on some important information on that. That's the only update that I have on the liaison front.
And we can share a little bit too. Todd and I were both there. We have an awesome foundation. They want to be partners with the district, and we're looking for ways in which we can be partners with them and, and build that out so they can, they can give back to, to our schools. So we all know that they do lightning grants in the fall. They do their regular grant cycles in the spring here. I think we're going to see that grant cycle applications coming out soon if they haven't already. I know Christine was all over that last night. So we're, we're running, they're running a whole nother sequence of grants for our teachers, so that'd be great. They're, they're working on other events. They have a lot of great, I think, plans in place. You know, they have a plan in place, I think, to, to help work and partner with us, and we're excited about that. It's a great opportunity, and anybody's looking to get involved. They're a great foundation. They are the foundation, yeah. So, you know, contact them, they're awesome.
Yeah. I think, I have to always, I can't see the, I don't know. We, the key takeaway for me is, you know, we want to, we collectively, district, the board, want to and need to engage with them and make sure that we're intertwined. You know, just because they have a name of the foundation doesn't mean they're an outside entity that, you know, they operate and we just work with them on trans, and on transactional level. We need to make sure we're intertwined from a strategic level. So making sure that we have really solid partnerships, not just with the people that already are working with them every single day, but where else? And that might be the board, that might be other, other groups within the district, it might be, you know, within PTOs, all of that. So I think it was really good to understand, you know, how do we help them succeed? Because ultimately, they, they do a lot of really great things for our teachers, for our community, and we want to support them in that endeavor to make sure that ultimately our, our staff and teachers are receiving that, and then our kids are being impacted by it. So it was a really good first meeting for me. I've never been with that group before, worked with other foundations in the past for other school districts, so I'm excited. I think, I think that's a really good opportunity for us to stay connected with them.
Do they have a plan? Because I know, I think it's been, I mean, I was on, I was a liaison last time. It's been over a year, maybe even two, since they lost their executive director, right?
I think it's been four.
Four years?
Yeah, it's been a while.
So that was part of our conversation yesterday.
Okay, so it's been, it's been a while, right? So it's, it's hard when you have volunteers that have other jobs, right? So you, as we all know. But I'm just saying, but so is, is there a plan to try to get someone in place to focus on that?
They are working on that right now.
Because it has been four years.
Yeah, I mean, it's clear, they're all working.
Is it a full-time position?
It would not be.
Part-time. Yeah, it, it was clear that they need to have, not, not that they're not working hard, but sometimes when you're caught in the minutia and the details and that day-to-day operations, you don't get a chance to get your head above the weeds and talk strategically. And for that group, you can tell, as I was listening, one of my takeaways was, they really need to be able to, like, take a breath for a second and focus long-term. You know, what are these, what, they could continue to do the same things they're doing all the time, and it's phenomenal, but I think there's opportunities there. They think there's opportunities there to do more. But that takes a, you, you need somebody who can get back and take a moment and do some strategic planning and really figure that out. We can't get stopped, stuck in operations also. They are going to work on getting that position filled. Yeah.
All right. Does anyone have any other, last call for any other updates to provide? All right, we will go, we will take a recess and reconvene our regular meeting at seven-thirty.